Well, the Town of Franklin Planning Board meeting for June 19th will begin at this moment. And first, we're going to review our minutes from the last meeting, May 15th. And everyone have a chance to look at those?
I'm going to be closer than acceptable.
Second, on the agenda tonight is the election of officers. Justin, do you have any ideas how we want to do this?
Well, this from our bylaws that I've got here. It states that election of officers has to be in the every county year in the month of June. And the terms run from July 1 through June 30. So whoever, is it a change or whoever's elected tonight would start in July would be would be the first meeting as the new officers.
We're looking for a new chairman and a new vice chairman. I'm most emotional about the officers we got.
I'll second that.
I'd like to repeat, we're looking for a new chairman. Sorry. All in favor of maintaining that? Any opposed? All right. Third, we're entering the area of public comment concerning the meeting today. And we have a lot of people speaking here today, too. It's going to be a fairly lengthy meeting. Justin, do you have any one that has signed up to speak?
Now, if there's anybody that wants to speak, you can come and speak now on the River District. Or if Chairman would like to, we can put it towards the end after you've heard some of some of the other speakers.
Well, I think we'll go with the scheduled speakers first. And then the people that want to speak, they may have some new information, some questions concerning it after they hear them. So the new business, are we under the first person on the agenda? Ben Lassiter?
If any of you don't know Ben, Ben worked for Main Spring Conservation. Done a lot of work in a business he's speaking on today.
Good right here? Do you all prefer the podium?
Well, first of all, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to say a couple of words. And I will be brief. I'll be glad to take any questions you guys have. I believe Justin particularly wanted me to speak a little bit to how we thought this River District overlay proposal relates to both the brownfield work that we've been doing down near the Greenway, as well as just some thoughts on stormwater and those kind of things. First of all, I'm sure you guys are aware, we were able to, a few years ago now, get the old James Duncan property under contract. And we're fortunate to get grant money to do pretty extensive cleanup on that site and turn it into green space adjacent to our office. So we're proud of that project and it continues to develop. We are working now to purchase the old Simpson Oil Property and get a brownfield agreement on it. And again, turn that into a green space that we hope will benefit both the Greenway as well as that whole neighborhood. So I think this River District overlay is really consistent with what a lot of folks are hoping will be something to revitalize that end of town and focus more on the natural and cultural resources down there near the river. And then I'll switch gears over to stormwater because I think that's what Justin had by my name on the on the agenda. Although Jason Madder on our staff may also have things to say to that. I'll just simply say that the, in the proposed overlay district, I understand that there's an 80% maximum impervious surface target. And of course, the other 20% of that would be pervious. You would assume that'd be green space or stormwater soils. And I think that's just a good thing. It's a good thing to do. Anytime you can catch that stormwater and allow nature essentially to treat that stormwater before it either goes into the river or goes into the stormwater drains is a positive thing. And I'll leave it at that and see if you guys have any questions for me, anything I can answer.
Water quality was one of the main thrusts of the overlay that we're putting together. And also trying to improve the likelihood of people utilizing their properties now through thereby letting them shine some light on what's available.
Absolutely. And the whole push toward a more walkable environment, I think, is just going to be key in that that area, be all that it can be in benefiting the town.
Just a quick question. What's your feelings on any kind of development that'll be next to or adjacent to the river? Or, but yet let me ask, how would you like to see that developed? On commercial and as the municipalities?
Sure. Development near the river is a completely different question in town versus out of town. So I'll preface that. However, in town, I think, you know, we already have a very built environment around the river in town. And I think the more we can do to embrace the river and focus, make people realize the river's there and is quite the resource here in town, the more we can do to educate folks, the better. I think as the language reads now, there's, you know, there's a 50-foot setback or I guess the flood.
The flood.
The flood plain. So you've already got kind of some some controls there as far as construction, encroachment, development, whatever, right on the riverbank. Because I think that's a bad thing. When you start eliminating native vegetation, that kind of thing, right on the riverbank, you need, you do need that. Okay. I'll ask you then.
No, I don't, I just don't agree with that to an extent. I mean, I understand, I appreciate that. But in the epic center of town, I'd see no harm if it engineered properly, a good segment or some segment of that river bank or area being redeveloped and given back to the people as a park and perhaps maybe stores or residential right behind it somewhere.
Oh, we can talk more about that later.
Absolutely.
But the more, the more you can allow folks to focus on the river, learn about the river and enjoy the river, you know, the better, while maintaining water quality and good intact areas.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I think Jason Madder?
Jason Madder. Jason's also with Main Spring. Jason's got a pretty extensive background on wildlife, so.
Mostly emphasis on fish. So thank you all for having me here. And my apologies for being late. I just literally got out of the creek and I changed my clothes. So like Ben, I'm going to keep it brief, just to give you a better idea of the work and my familiarity with the river itself. I can speak more to the water quality. And then if it generates any sort of questions, feel free to ask. But you have two main river, rivers coming, the Little Tennessee River and Colosseia River that come in as it approaches Franklin within the River Overlay District. The flowing portions of that river is where the greatest diversity of fish are. That's where you're going to see a lot of different types of fish. And that's where when we talk about the unique area that we live in, that's where those fish are. That's where they exist. As it comes into Franklin, we have Lake Emery, so it creates a giant pool. So there are fewer fish that live within Lake Emery itself than on the flowing parts of the river. That's not to say that it's in worse condition. It's just a different water rock. The water coming into it is relatively clean. And it's also a great opportunity for folks to get out and to view the water, see the water. Now, on the flip side, and I'll say that as the Little Tennessee River and all the watersheds that flow into Little Tennessee River is part of the native fish conservation area. So it is a special, has a special designation. That said, the lake itself also presents its own recreational benefits, even from an angling standpoint, if you want to catch fish. Now generally, most, not all, but most of the fish that you would actually target out of Lake Emery and within the River Overlay District would not be native fish, but nonetheless, it's still a recreational opportunity. The fish are already there, you might as well catch them, have fun, utilize the resource. Besides that, the water quality itself feeding in is clean, if done properly. Just being aware of any, any construction next to the river would be a potential source of sediment, which is the number one pollutant in the area. But the impervious surface, limiting the amount of impervious surface is also a good step in the right direction to improving that water quality in the stormwater, the public infrastructure stormwater system. Will keep a lot of that runoff out of the stream, will keep the river itself healthy. And also, one other thing would be with vegetation, if there's any sort of, I saw that the trees have been implemented within the Overlay District and native tree species. They do hold a string bank and they do, besides that, they provide habitat. So underneath, to dive down underneath Lake Emery and you see a lot of these roots as the trees, the roots grow underground, usually you don't see them, but the roots will extend out into the, into the water, which that's is attractive for fish. So again, it creates a fish habitat. That's it. I'll leave it open to questions.
What about pesticides and fertilizers and things like that? Do you think we have some adequate, I don't know if we've got anything in here about those kinds of things supposed to be there?
Yeah, there's no, there's no language in here on that, but to be honest, how that affects, it sure is not good.
There are pesticides that are approved for use around the water. There are also herbicides that are approved, if done properly with a license applicator. And certain, the proper amounts, dosage, I would say that you can minimize the risk to, to that pollution. Going back to, again, with vegetation, as many roots, whether it's from grass, preferably trees or shrubs, those roots are going to soak up those nutrients, those pesticides. They'll soak up any excess fertilizer, which we're going to keep it out of the stream.
Big sponge?
It's a sponge, right.
So the primary sedimentation is probably construction and maybe livestock in our areas?
To some extent, yes. Anytime that you've ever gone down near the creek or the river and you see these sheer raw banks, sheer cliffs, where the land just keeps falling in, those are just chunks and chugs of sediment every time storms and floods that just go into the creek. It flushes downstream into a pool and settles out somewhere.
So encouraging, paying support would be ideal for this area?
Yes, yes.
But what about dredging? Are they doing any dredging of the sediment in the river or the lake area anymore?
I believe there's, there's still that operation right there at the confluence of the Colosseia and the Little Tennessee. They, pretty infrequent to my knowledge, but they have operated and continue to operate.
Does Main Spring have any water statistics as far as the health, the health of the water? We can do or use?
We have, we have 20, we're going on 28 years of fish-based health. So depending on are sensitive fish present or are the sensitive fish left, we have that type of information, have that data available. Specific chemical testing, we don't have.
Great question. So you have some better?
In general, yes. Yes, in general. It's a slow process. You're talking about sediment. And that's dirt that takes decades, centuries to flush itself out. So it's a gradual process. But yes, in general, it's much better.
Anything else? From your point of view, is there any, we're looking for ways to build like a toolbox for property owners down there? If there was applicable grants or funding for them to repair their banks if they're planning, or if they don't plan to develop their property in some time in the future? If we had some sort of resource for them to go to and say, well, I could do this, if I could get this grant, I could perhaps improve my property?
Main Spring, as a, we're a nonprofit, so we don't, we don't have the funds. Sometimes we do, sometimes we get grants from elsewhere. But we certainly would be a good source, a resource that you could send people into that direction and either we could, you know, no promises, but it depends on the nature of the grant. What, right now, we're doing this light touch modification, which is simply not large-scale restoration, but just planting a few trees along the string bank. But it varies from year to year. We'd be glad to be a resource.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Levin?
Good evening, everyone. Thought I might provide a little background in history that you probably already know, but maybe you don't, so I can answer any questions that you might have. Predecessor to Duke Energy currently was Nantahala Power and Light. Nantahala Power and Light was formed in 1929. And so a little history about the Franklin Project. The Franklin Hydroelectric Plant was acquired by Nantahala Power and Light in 1933. Built in 1925, the dam and powerhouse supplied electricity to the municipal customers of Franklin. It was actually an asset of the Town of Franklin. By the time of the Depression, the town had sold the facility to Northwest Carolina's Utility to let the plant fall into disrepair. In 1933, Northwest Carolina let the plant revert back to the town. And in May of that year, May of 1933, management of the plant was taken over by Nantahala Power and Light Company. And in November 1933, Nantahala Power and Light bought the plant from the Town of Franklin. Couple of, I'm a little bit of a hydro history geek, but I find it interesting. So the Franklin development was the second hydroelectric development that Nantahala Power and Light bought. The first one was Mission, which was owned by the Town of Andrews. And as an interesting fun fact, in the Nantahala area, our largest reservoirs are Lake Nantahala by shoreline miles, followed by Lake Glendale, Bear Creek, and then Lake Emery, which has 12 miles of shoreline within the town limits. And to give you just a little bit of an idea how that footprint runs, you have Franklin Powerhouse down near what is known as Porter's Bend. Again, I'm not an engineer, but it's a very nice feature to have put the dam because you know it's on a little bit of a constriction. The water backs up within the project boundary to the parking lot of the Colosseia Rec Department, where the soccer fields are and the football fields there. And then where Tassi Shelter is, it backs up to right below where the little fishing dock is and access area is. So that's sort of the footprint of what Duke is responsible for. A little bit more about the reservoirs, 198 acres. We have two units at the powerhouse. And if all is going well, we have good inflows coming in, we're able to generate about 1,200 kilowatts of energy at that Franklin plant. The plant is 35, 35.5 feet tall and expands the river at 463 feet. And full pond, the elevation is 2,022 feet USGS. And the significance of that is where Duke is concerned, any work that occurs within the project boundary, which is defined by that full pool elevation, requires authorization, permit from Duke to do that work. So, and it's unique, back up a little bit more about the history of the hydro developments here. Franklin is the only one where we do not own property above full pond. So just give you that, I don't know if you're aware of that or not with what you're looking at for your River District planning. A little more history related to, that you guys already know, but just to share it with you. The Greenway that is there is a result of Duke Energy's efforts, Nantahala Power and Light and Duke Energy's efforts in 1997 to build the transmission corridor. And that transmission route, there's a substation literally just downstream of Franklin Plant and it goes from there to the Deho Street Substation, which is over here where the lumber, shop lumber is, just as a tie point. And I could digress and tell you more about how our transmission system works as a whole, but it's a fairly intelligent system that is circular and feeds out, so we have multiple ways. And the construction of this transmission line allows us even more reliability to help backfeed substations, provide redundancy, if you will, for transmission fees to substations. But the reason it was built was because our area is growing and we needed to electrically be able to support that. One thing with the transmission line also, for your information, is different, is that we retained 150 feet right-of-way for our transmission line. The planning in the late 90s was possibly for a double circuit structure so that there could be two towers. I'm not saying that that's what's going to happen, but that's why they retained the 150-foot right-of-way so that we could electrically do what we needed to do to ensure our power reliability. So within that, just bring up again, since, you know, that corridor really parallels the river and the Greenway, there are restrictions on what can be, what can be constructed within the transmission right-of-way. So a little history there. We'll mention that in 2003, we went through the efforts to relicense all the hydro facilities in the Nantahala area, Lake Emery being one. I like to jokingly say it, I've got to say it or I'll mess up and say it, try to be serious, I refer to it as beautiful Lake Amore. But all joking aside, Lake Emery was relicensed. And one of the things that came from that is that we put the access area in that you have there at the entry to Town Mountain Estates. And that is something that the stakeholders wanted, so we have that access point. And you ask about dredging. The dredging operation that is there at the confluence of Colosseia and the Little Tennessee is grandfathered in, but if it were ever to go out of operation, we do not allow dredging on our small reservoirs. As a matter of fact, we don't allow any dredging on any of the reservoirs in the Nantahala area. So I don't know what your interest was with dredging, but I can answer that at a high level for Duke where Duke is concerned with what Ken and I are currently.
Is it detrimental to the dam itself, dredging, or?
Not the dam itself, you know, because there, there are people here can speak better than I. But you know, the dam really just, it developed a big sediment pond, so it traps a lot of, as Jason was addressing, the sediments that are there. So it makes for good operations that was there at the confluence for the operations. Plus, there's a nice little area where they can, can carry on their operations, so. But to the dam itself, no. So I've given you a very high overview. Are there any questions that I can ask that you have?
I'd like to, so speak to us just for a few steps of ways that we would go about getting authorization from Duke if indeed we wanted to move this forward and we do need authorization. Could you just give us a little kind of an overview?
Yes, I can do that. And with me this evening is Kevin Holland. Kevin is the Duke Energy Lake Services Representative, and he deals with all the permitting issues on all the reservoirs in the Nantahala area. So, you know, if you had specific questions or specific requests, you would end up contacting Kevin to get those, get those answered. And one thing while it's running through my head, to see to your later, I guess I should be referring to Mrs. Landford properly in public, but the bridge that's being replaced went through a very lengthy application process. As a matter of fact, Kevin succeeds me as the Lake Service Representative. I started on that application, when was it Kevin? '08?
'05, '06?
'06. And so it wasn't until last year that it finally got approved. But that's not to say it's that lengthy. There were a lot of things went on, there was a lot of changes in personnel at the state level who was responsible for completing the application. But just to give you an example, that, the bridge replacement went through a very lengthy review process and even went to, I'm bad to use the acronym FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and DC for final approval. So I'm not implying that what you may be looking at will require that, but I'm just giving you an example of what is required at Duke to allow any work within the FERC project boundary.
Is there any plans of cleaning the wake up?
No. No, as in dredging or any removal?
It's full, everyone.
Yeah, it is literally full of lots of things. I cannot recall, but it was in the mid 2000s, Western Carolina University did core samples and sediment studies. And it was very interesting because from the testing from Tennessee, Oak Ridge, there's, one can see that in the sediment of Lake Emery. It's very interesting timeline with development after 2000, I mean 1925, you know, the sediment started building up. And so there's a timeline within that, so. But there has been interest of lots of groups about dredging or flushing it out, and it's better to keep it where it is.
What about the flood plain with more sediment in it? Does it?
That's a good question. I mean, you know, we, and we have had a number of high water events in January two years ago and then in 13, you know, where we saw lots of water, high water. You know, I saw water rolling off of banks in Franklin that I hadn't seen. I mean, and I'll get away my age here, but my recall is the 64 flood in Franklin, which I saw pictures of and how high the water was backed up. And you know, we saw in 13, water there at the intersection of the Highlands Road and Main Street, which I had never seen. But you know, that was just running off the banks and I digress. But I don't know how to answer your question specifically about that. But you know, we have witnessed some high water events in the river out of banks.
Are there any other plans for additional access to the lake at this point?
Not at this time, at least not by, by Duke.
And that's 150-foot little right-of-way, that means no building, no usage?
That is correct. It is, it is very restricted. Like at Wesley's Park, that's where the dog, that's almost sort of an exception to the rule because it is directly under our transmission line. But one way that we've worked through that is that there are gates on either ends that we can get equipment in. So there's a little bit of an understanding, but you know, if we have to get to our structures to work on them, that's what we'll do. And I guess I should, here's the opportunity to say, the pavement for the Greenway was engineered so that we could put our equipment on it. And you know, we built that so that it could And, you know, we built that so that it could carry the weight of our equipment to make repairs on our transmission line.
So additional dog parks aren't out of the question?
Never say never. Yeah, so be open to discussion. I mean, within that transmission corridor, when we need to look at it.
Would you be willing to help us and serve with us if we start forming committees and look at this?
Gladly, be glad to serve. Yeah, I'm all about anything I can do. Benefit for, in particular, the town I live in and the place I call home for experiment anytime.
Because we would definitely need your help.
Sure, be glad to do that. Excellent. Anything else?
I said we'd have time, you're here.
Oh, well, I'll be glad to assist in any way I can. Any other questions? Anything else I can help you with?
Thank you for your input.
Oh, you're welcome. Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
And next on the agenda would be Lewis Penman.
Hey, y'all. First of all, I want to compliment y'all. It's real refreshing to finally see a planning board in Lake County planning. Keep going. I recently read a Wall Street Journal article about rural America, the new inner cities. And it sounded a lot like Franklin. It talked about the hospitals closing down, lack of high-speed internet, employable workforce, young people leaving and not coming back. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? At the end of the article, it kind of came to a conclusion that the best way to turn this around, to start to turn it around, is create communities people want to live in. And by doing that, you're going to pull, we're not going to get high-speed internet and all that other until we get a community where people want to be there. And when the people come, the internet will follow and everything else will. So it's really good to see y'all doing that. Great examples of these river districts would be Greenville, South Carolina, the Reedy River. I encourage you, if you haven't gone and seen that. It's absolutely awesome. I've worked, built golf courses for 30 years. And I've seen a lot of places. And we've had developments that would give the right arm to nail that river that we have here. And it's always bugged me how our buildings along the river, they back up the river. They've never turned and faced the most bagged asset we had. And that, that's kind of refreshing to see y'all are addressing that now. Stormwater, I'm glad y'all are talking about that. It's an excellent subject. And the, you can already see the problems we're starting to have with stormwater. Perfect example is our high school football field. It's starting to flood up. And I think Devin and a few of us might be old enough to remember. When we were younger, we really didn't see that. But as we're developing more and more in town, you're getting stormwater faster and faster to you. When stormwater hits a hard surface, it runs fast. If you have the permeable surfaces to slow it down and everything else, it's much better. And I don't think y'all need to just focus on the stormwater right down in the river district. I think you need to look outside of that and start addressing outside of that. I noticed a real increase in stormwater in the town of Franklin after that big church was built above, Radio Shack. Bam. And I really encourage y'all, you need to really address the stormwater issues. And it will buy you time down the road because there's undersized culverts. And when they were put in at that time, they never looked far enough ahead where we're at today to take that into account. And stormwater retention, Asheville does a wonderful job on the rain gardens, the level spreaders, that type of stuff. So it's close enough that you can actually go see and look into it more over there. It's a, it's really a good thing because when you catch the stormwater, stormwater has a lot of break dust, oils. I mean, there's contaminants. You mentioned fertilizer and everything else. Well, when you can direct that stormwater into these retention ponds and have a rain garden, there's natural vegetation that will clean that out. And another thing about stormwater, you really don't want, it's heated up, it's contaminated, everything else. You don't want to send it right to your streams. You want to hold it in those ponds and let it naturally soak back into your water, recharge your water table. So it's a win-win deal there. So I really encourage you to not only look outside the actual district, but stormwater in general. Because if you don't, it's going to give you a real big problem. I mean, it's, there's no doubt about it. And you don't have to go reinvent the wheel when you're looking at this stormwater. Don't go hire engineers and study for the next 10 years. There's no need to. There is great stormwater stuff. I'm sure Justin's aware of it, other communities have done it. I think I would take, take some of those examples and try to glean out something that would fit us without a lot of time. Because I think it is something we really need to be addressing now. How many have been to Charleston or Savannah? Did you like the town? I mean, is it? They started planning those towns in the 1800s. And it was originally started. And those people had the foresight to do the planning and spend the time. And the interesting thing about planners, the stuff y'all talk about today, you probably won't live long enough to see it in full rotation. But that's okay because those guys did. But look at where it's at today. And those people are grateful for that foresight at that time. And there's going to be naysayers. I don't care what you do. There's going to be somebody who appears just totally against it and everything else. And that's fine, but just keep the discussion, listen to them. Sometimes they have good things or not. But I encourage you to have the ability or the desire to see it through. Don't dumb down for lowest denominator. Let's raise the bar for change. And I think we'll see a great benefit in what will happen here in Macon County. We even passed probably 10 years of got over in the stream restoration and that type of stuff. And I think Jason mentioned the vertical banks. And that is one of the heaviest sediment loads that you can get on a river. It's a vertical bank like that. And I think the DOT has a statistic, 22% of sediment, the largest producer of sediment is construction activity. Number one. And here's another thing about sediment and everything else. It's interesting that I've learned, if you address your sedimentation up here in the construction areas and before it gets to the stream, it's usually $15 a cubic yard cost-wise. If it gets in those reservoirs, it can go 300 up. So it's more cost-effective to rest it out here than letting it get in a reservoir. And we're already full down there. Yes, please.
Lewis, are people not doing what they're supposed to do when they're doing construction or redevelopment or whatever? Like are they, is it mandatory around here to put riprap then?
It's, there's laws on the book. We just had a recent planning board discussion with the county and lack of enforcement.
Maybe there should be a planning inspector.
I'm going to leave that up to y'all.
Well, we don't have jurisdiction.
Well, you do within the city limits, you can do that. And I think that's a great place to start. And you know, that's the other thing. When you start talking about this stuff and, you know, concerned about that stuff, that gets in the news and it starts getting people interested. Maybe, you know, they are a progressive community. Maybe that's some work that I would like to invest my retirement period into. And I hope we can turn that around because it really breaks my heart. That's one of them.
I think that would be a wonderful arm for the county.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You got laws, you got antiques.
We should acquire here.
No permit?
Well, one of the reasons I think Justin had gotten the ball rolling on this type of issue is, is FEMA's insurance is going to be available for the people along the river. Most people weren't bothered to look at it because they couldn't insure or get loans on it.
Absolutely.
But things have changed and we're trying to stay ahead of the ball.
Well, that's another thing. We really need to start paying attention to is filling our floodplains. Floodplain is a natural system to handle floods. God's smarter than we are and that's how he designed it to happen. And every time we fill those floodplains, we start raising that flood elevation level. And I think that's what you're seeing with these maps is you come in there and you size the pipes and you look at the runoff that's coming above you. And there's nothing really being addressed to take into account that. So they're looking at worst-case scenarios because of that. I think if, you know, you start looking at retaining your stormwater, addressing your floodplains and that type of stuff, I think you'll have more negotiating skills than you do now.
That's your food waters.
Any more questions?
Before he gets off, there's even some more technology that's out now. Me and Ben were talking about this earlier today. There's technology, there's other ones like this. It's just one I've looked at. Company called Aqua Shield. They make, they make devices for stormwater that are for storm drains, parking lots, so on. That right now, like if it rains and all your, our storm drains that we have on Main Street, everything hits a storm drain, it starts running pipes. Eventually just going to go into Crawford Ranch or Little Tennessee. There's nothing to stop it. So you've got, you know, Coke bottle lids and Starbucks, you know, cigarette butts, everything, cups, all sorts of stuff. Oil and all, grass clippings, all that eventually is just going to go towards the river. And this, this product that they make is large containers, like big tanks that would collect the stormwater before it would enter the river. And all the sediment is going to fall to the bottom of it and any of the trash before it wouldn't allow it going to the river.
Ingalls did that.
Yeah, Ingalls was the, our new Ingalls is going to have one of these on theirs for their parking lot. So they're, they're thinking green when they're building. So it'd be nice if we could have some of this that could go into like our DOT and maybe retrofit some of our storm drains. So for our roads. So it's just more, and I've got literature if you want to pass it. I can pass it down if you want to look through some of them. There's a couple of different ones. Sure, I'm not advocating for that company. I'm just wondering, I'm aware of.
That type of technology can be developed right on site also.
And you wouldn't know it's even there. From the pictures, it looks like, just looks like a storm drain lid. And then underneath the ground is a tank that's every so often that you can have somebody come by and clean and get the sediment out. So that's not, that's less sediment going towards the river, which is entails better stream health, more fishing, more recreation, more people along the river.
Quick, quick question. It goes along the deep path. But you mentioned, just mentioned Ingalls do development there on 441. It's put through the town limits, correct? Right, the county has issued them a building permit, commercial permit to build that building. So there's no one checking their drainage plan?
The county, there's still that stormwater falls into town. So if there's stormwater permitted.
I know, but is someone checking if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Yeah, yeah, they have to be. They have inspections, if you're allowed to say.
They do, okay.
I wouldn't worry about Ingalls. They bend up backwards. They're like, hold they though.
They're an exception to the rule.
Very much so.
But I just was asked that question. I've never built with a permit around here, I don't know.
You know, we get a permit and then you get to do what you want. That's not how it works.
Well, if there's something you want real bad.
I just think now that's, you're checking drainage.
Any additional questions?
Thank y'all. Keep quiet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lewis.
And now we'll return to public comment. If there's anyone that joined us today that has some comments on this finding issue that we're working on. So the next business is discussion of.
Before we go on, I'd like to thank all of the speakers today.
Oh, yes.
I think that you know, he's quite good.
That was helpful. And we may call you back when we think of some questions that we could generate tonight. Lots of the guests.
I guarantee you'll call you back.
The last thing on our agenda is discussion of sexually oriented businesses for an exploit.
So what this is, since this has kind of come down from our town attorney, we're having to look at this because currently we have Chapter 156, which is our, which regulates sexually oriented businesses. So this is, what is this is a text amendment to it. In your packet, you'll see, first in your packet that I sent out to everybody is a section of our Unified Development Order, that's our UDO, where currently sexually oriented businesses are only allowed in our industrial district. Being, we have zoning. Nothing can be zoned out, you know, any community anywhere in the country. It's illegal to zone any use out for First Amendment rights. So regardless of this, if this is something that we, you know, we want or we don't want, we have to allow it somewhere. So the town, when we adopted the UDO, decided that the place that we wanted to allow it was in the industrial district. So, you know, we're regulating and saying we want it there. We don't want it in mixed use or residential or even our commercial districts. Well, since then, the town also has the Chapter 156, which regulates sexually oriented businesses, which I have attached in your packet as well. And what we are having, what we are looking at is we, in a sense, when we adopted the sexually oriented business, there's a section under location, which is 15608. We currently have it where it can't be within 1,000 foot of a church or a resident or a school or a daycare currently. So, which is in good faith of town because that's, you know, that's not where we want these types of businesses. But in since our industrial district, where we have our industrial district in town, which I have attached some maps as well. When you take in the fact that 1,000-foot buffer along our residential neighborhoods, which you can see a map, which is the yellow parcels and the blue is the industrial, we've since zoned out these types of uses. We've since got two, only two parcels that it's even allowed on within our zoning district. So what this has come about is to try to change that so we don't make ourselves liable for a federal lawsuit, which we potentially could be. I've attached those maps. You can see the first one, which is the 1,000-foot. The circles in blue, you see the circles. These, because I'm saying this is circles. That's going off all these parts that are in yellow. That's the 1,000-foot. So we've since just got this little area right here along the river that is currently allowed. The next one is a 500-foot, shows what it would look like under 500-foot. And then the last is 250-foot. So town attorney's recommendation, which you should see, his drafted amendment was to change it from 1,000 feet to 250 feet, which would, there would still be some of the industrial district that it wouldn't be allowed in, but it's not as strict as it was. So that's the main reason on the change. The other is some minor changes on, you can see, under fees. 15607, the fees, there were changes to it. Since the, there was some old language in there where there was a, had a fee of, I think it's about a $1,000 fee to have one of these types of businesses. And since that fee is null and void now because the state doesn't allow privileged licenses anymore. So they fall under our standard business registration that we have now, which is just a flat $10 which is for any business, doesn't matter if it's a Walmart or a hair salon. It's $10.
That went down, did it? That fee go down?
No, it's $10 from what it currently is. It hasn't went down since, that's what it went to after we did.
I thought it was $50.
No, no, it's been 10 since we went to that. And that, that's just a fee to check zoning and other requirements. So that's why the change, why we're having to do this change so we even ourselves out of some liabilities.
How far is 250 feet? I need to visualize that.
That's this third last map in your packet.
Yeah, I know, but how far?
That's about 90% of the water.
Yeah, you can see, like from a, from a school, you can see a sexually oriented business that replaced 250 feet.
Absolutely, less than 100. Just to be clear, what's in blue doesn't change. It's just the restriction within the industrial. We're not bringing these businesses to Main Street here.
No, no, this is to keep it, in a sense, we said we only would allow it in industrial. And since when we had this large restriction of this 1,000 feet, it made it almost. and since when we had this large restriction of this thousand feet, it made it almost impossible to even have it there as well, which is the issue. So that's why the change was, was reg, town attorney is recommending going from the thousand to the two fifty.
The two fifty pretty well opens up the whole industrial zone or the whole parcel.
For just about all of it, so.
And it's just a small stretch on Depot Street, it looks like.
There is another section of industrial, um, which is where the landfill is located, but I didn't include it because it's primarily the landfill and the county law and the jail, so I didn't include that section of industrial because obviously the county's selling it and they're laying any kind of, for that.
This is due to the state regulations or federal regulations or both, combination?
Yeah, it's combination, it falls, it's, there's, there's multiple, um, Supreme Court cases on this type of issue, so.
So you're saying.
It's concerning the First Amendment rights and everything.
So you're saying we really don't have a, much of a choice here in order to protect.
I'm not, I'm counsel, but I've talked to town attorney John Hanning and I would think he would say that is the case.
But we, we have a choice between two hundred and fifty and five hundred?
That could, yeah, I mean, you could say five hundred if you wanna go with that. I'm just giving you what a town attorney thought was the best to go by one of the two fifty.
It's just all red paper for a lawsuit.
I mean, that issue might be that that space, that five hundred feet, and still gives you.
You could split that area and go three hundred, three fifty somewhere between. If you wanted to keep it on the industrial segment primarily. Doesn't look like on the two fifty, you're gonna have both east and west side of Depot Street and parcels available.
Well, just remember the areas that are in pink on Depot Street are not that.
No.
Just the sections that are blue, by the way, our zoning is kind of industrial, blue is industrial, pink is C two.
But as we change, now I just think, we're, we're talking about the way we've got it zoned today, but you know how many requests we have to change zoning from one thing to another? So you've got to think beyond just this zoning space.
And when we use the terminology industrial, it would go to any industrial zoned area that we may develop in the future too, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. And there has, answered, um, now, a little bit, there has not been any request to change adults established in other districts, like allowing them to C two, C three, there's not been any request, I think about that.
Well, we've gotta designate some kind of zone, so it's our best shot. It's our least amount of property we have.
But we can still be legal if we had five hundred?
Maybe, I don't, um, I have to defer that to the town attorney.
We have a pre-balken file based on the map, it's a very small portion of the town that we're talking about.
Right, but we could at any time create new industrial zones, but you don't know where that's going to be and how close it's going to be to a.
So we would have to consider this as that, as a consideration.
At that time, if that came out, we could request change.
Well, you can't, you can't, uh, do it based on, you know, prejudice toward anything, so you've got to make your decision overall. And then you can't come up and say, oh, but we've got this year, so we gotta change everything.
Well, why don't we just compromise and go to the ground and get the fee?
Wait, three seventy-five?
Going once, going twice.
I, I would like, I would like to ask, if, ask John if five hundred feet would get us up in the legal limit, in the, to get us legal, so that we wouldn't have a lawsuit, because it, it opens up a big portion of that industrial area, but it still gives us more of a feeling of a buffer. How, Justin, could we table this so that John could come to the next meeting?
Um, you would need to table it for about, you can only table it till next week. They've already scheduled a hearing for July, John's trying to get this pushed through pretty quick.
In other words, you're looking for a motion to.
If you wanted to table, if you wanted to meet next Monday or something, if you wanna recess go in.
Well, let me ask a question, let me ask a question to the board formally, does everyone feel that five hundred feet is what we'd like to do?
I think I'd try it, I mean, that's what I would prefer to do would be to try five hundred feet and if that doesn't work, then we'll, we'll work. I would like to hear John Hanning's opinion before I would make this decision, I'd like that.
We could make that motion for five and if it has to be bumped back, so be it.
We've got about three options here. We can take, let them.
I mean, John's not here to speak for himself, I, I, you sound like he's adamant about it or.
He was pretty adamant of the two fifty.
Excuse me?
He was pretty adamant of the two fifty.
He was, wonder what.
His conversation for me.
Then, what do you think?
If you do that and we want five, but we can't get everything we want, it's turning to all. Yeah, apparently we've gotta go by his legal.
Well, I agree, I agree, we, we need to do it once and not have to address it again. But I'm, I'm not willing to give an inch more than we have to give, is what I'm saying.
So you're looking at the minimum that John would feel comfortable that he wouldn't have to defend in the future?
Right.
That's the number you're looking for and, Justin, you're saying that your feeling is he, he was indicating.
I mean, let's put it this way, I originally was thinking five hundred was what I was originally thinking and John didn't think that was a good number. Well, he, after I made these maps and showed him these maps.
So that backs down to the two fifty or a number between two fifty and five hundred?
Well, I don't think we can, uh, you know, it's, it's like, uh, sifting straws to try to pick a number. You're either gonna have to go with, if you think that's what it is, gonna go with two fifty. But I do think that's gonna have to be in our, the forefront of our thinking when we, we do redistricting or, you know, resign or quit.
If that comes up, that would be there.
And are we protecting, does that protect our schools and our churches? Does it protect me? That's the question. I mean, we, we created the ordinance to try to protect our children and protect our churches.
If those businesses come to fruition, I don't think two hundred and fifty feet versus five hundred feet is gonna protect our children in a way.
Well, that's, that's.
But the good thing is, there's no, there's, in this zone here, there's no churches or schools or daycares or anything right there right now, so.
Yes, today.
Today, so, um, if one was ever, if one was ever proposed, because they've come to me, I would make them aware that this was, could be a possibility, they should be thinking about that.
But you're trying to wrap your head around this, and I'm looking at the two fifty chart right now, and looking at all the blue, looking at hardwood drive, and I sort of kinda know most of these parcels, you know? It looks to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, say I wanted a pit line in that blue area somewhere, would I have to be two hundred and fifty feet off the road or off the nearest? Circle.
Circle, whichever you see a blue circle, you couldn't be within that.
Right.
Inside any of them circles.
So I don't have a, a scale here to look at, but when I look at it.
Yeah, there's a scale. The scale on the first one, the other one.
Oh, one of the scales, one of the, oh, one inch, all right, so, oh, that's, that's, come on. Uh, one inch, five hundred feet, oh boy, looks like, uh, they'd be able to put it right on the road, right there. See it right there, there it is, right there on the road. Five hundred would ensure us that they have a setback way off the road. Just saying, this is the furthest, right here, right, that's about one inch, right there. So they could put it right on the road right there, just saying that's about where.
About two trillion feet.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. I'm just saying, and that's what's, I suppose.
Well, we've had some discussion and, uh, does anyone have a, an idea what they wanna move forward with? We can postpone this, table it for one week?
Can, can we table this because we'd really like to say here, John, even if he has to write for us, in writing, he can't be here, then we wouldn't write. Yeah, I would want to, I, I make a motion to table this.
So we've gotta come back next Monday?
Next Monday. Anyone got a problem today?
I don't, yeah.
What's, what is next Monday?
Uh, twenty-sixth.
Actually, I mean, uh, holiday week. Is the room available?
Um, I think so, really, there's nothing, you know, in the last week and month.
Maybe you could draft up some other, um, other maps and quantify it down.
And the other industrial district.
Two fifty, how many do you need for a quorum next Monday?
Apparently this, you have to have, you have to have four for a quorum.
Four, okay.
Four is our point.
I'm committed now.
On the floor right now, we had a motion to table this before we move forward.
Before we vote though, should we find out if Mr. Hanning is gonna be able to be here? Because if he's not gonna be able to be here, what's the point?
Well, we could get his opinion.
We, yeah, why don't we provide an opinion?
Right, right to it, yeah.
Good job.
Okay, or we could do a conference call or something.
Or ask him what the minimum, what the.
Said two fifty.
He was comfortable with two fifty, I think, uh, they're looking at possibly somewhere between like a three fifty, whether we are at that, instead of the five hundred.
Still goes on the street.
If you measure it that way, it's not gonna make any difference.
Not really.
No, it's not. If you take your pen and measure it, you can.
Three fifty's not gonna make that up.
It's gotta, five would be a minimum in my, in my, in my opinion. I mean, is he going on case study or something, or is he just doing what everybody else is doing?
Is that research?
Research?
And just looking at the area that's left after, so, it was his recommendation of the two fifty. But it's a recommendation, I mean, your, your, your vote is a recommendation of the town board, so.
And then they, they make their own decision?
Why don't we vote for five hundred and just kick it back to the board?
Is this just a right?
And let, and let the attorney deal with it. You like that?
So if we make the motion to table, we'll have to take that motion.
That'll be here. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'll take that motion, I'd, I'd like to re-motion, I'd like.
It's your new vote.
Uh, my new motion is, um, to, uh, go with five hundred feet for a distance and every, every other recommendation that you've come up with, the fee, and, is that out?
That John has drafted.
Yeah, that John has drafted, everything else is, is fine with that, I mean, we can say that in some kind of special words.
You're done.
I was done before I walked in.
Do we have a second on such a motion?
I'll second that, along with District five hundred feet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Looks like that motion passed and John can talk to the council people about that.
Yeah, council members.
Members. And that's it for the meeting, except, do we have a possibility of a new member being on board in the future, or are we still?
Um, we've sent out applications or advertised for it, as just as our staff, um, so Andrew is our alternate who's serving for Todd right now, so we're gathering applications and what's.
He's trying to find.
Andrew would like to be a regular member, but then we have an alternate position open as well, so.
So we're looking for an alt, we're looking for another member to have.
Another alt for that.
And then we also have an ETJ alternate that has been open for.
Forever.
Yeah, year and a half, two years. Have they ever had any applications? It has to live in the ETJ, and that's a, the person would only say for Dave, for Janet, say our ETJ representative. It would also have to be approved by the county official.
You heard that, anyone live in the ETJ?
What is that, anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn the meeting for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Alrighty.
Thank you.